Morning.
Good morning.
I'm sitting here thinking, boy, we got in here early with this one.
Sir.
You're welcome. It's like a cat door right there.
You know, they're playing with their mic. I don't see the, uh, post captioning on that.
You got it.
Lighters.
I think you have it.
What's that?
Yeah, well.
We've got it on ours. Can we see it up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Early.
Yes.
Oh, it's been short.
Seven quarters.
Saving that for later.
I was gonna cut you off on the camera.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Oh. Overall? Gonna be great. Right after. Sorry.
Not that we ever had this, but we turned it that long.
I love it.
I love it.
The fact that this is recording is the best part.
I know.
He's playing, Woods. He's playing.
Trying to make sure we're complying.
It's every.
Looks different.
Are you okay? Are you ready, gentlemen?
Yes, sir. Please. All right. We have only one thing on your consent agenda.
This is getting better, but apparently it's really well.
Everybody's got the game kicked up a bit. I don't have audio. I don't feel like I do.
Nope.
He played with the game this morning on the mic, so that might.
I'll try again. All right, on the consent agenda, we have item number five. And that is, uh, resolution to revise our grievance procedure for the ADA Act of nineteen ninety.
Okay.
You heard it, you heard it outside.
You're not saying that.
All right. This will update the position, which was spelled out on the previous resolution. It's changed, and so we're just updating that. So nothing else should have changed on it. But the designated person's responsible.
Thank you.
Construction program, we're still shut down. Maybe March will get going again. Uh, road design, Courtney Road, still waiting for Wash Dot to give us permission to award. So for that one point five million, uh, and appropriation that we received for that project, they're requiring us to do a little more work. Um, although this is different, so we're looking for documentation when first received the money. We, uh, when we heard it was coming through Wash Dot, we asked questions of what would be required. And so now it seems like, um, they're requiring more than they told us would be required originally to receive the funds. So they have a process for how you're supposed to. The design process is supposed to go. And so we were worried that a lot of those requirements and strings would be attached to these dollars. And so we called in initially to find out so we could actually do those things along the way. Now they're adding more, and so we're trying to go back and find the documentation to send to them because it's all new people.
Yes.
Uh, there, and, uh, so it's critical that we get this, but we're delayed until they give us the okay to receive those funds and use them on the project.
Still set to start if we can put these funds later in, but we can order or we can't?
Can order.
We award, we lose them. They're following the federal requirement type of thing.
Yeah, which we weren't supposed to.
No.
When we received those dollars originally. So we, we may need some help. But, yeah, but we're hoping we can resolve it on our level. That's where.
How long it are? How long we have?
Can't remember how many days we have.
We have some time. We've talked to the contractor and told them the situation too.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have that, and then we also need to talk to you guys about the call total cost of the project. The total cost is originally what we, you know, I didn't say it's what it said it was gonna be. It was the low, that's what the spreadsheet is, the low bid is six, almost six, five, structure construction. The rock provided, remember that when we opened the bids, that we're supplying the rock count that comes out of ER and R, they have to be reversed. But I did look at those prices, those, because we crushed the rock way back when, we're getting it for six something. Which going price now is about. So it's a good price there. Engineering's two fifty. What I call the wintering, and because it's a big project, we, you can't, you don't know what that's gonna be, so you put force account item in that. And if you had, the problem is, is you don't, nobody has people. So you don't, they can't hit it with a big crew, so it's gonna be a smaller crew. It's gonna winter over, and there's gonna be cost us for them. The last one was right around a hundred twenty thousand dollars when we did the first BTC, the first Crystal Court McDonald project. This one, we're estimating around two hundred thousand. We hope we can keep it under that, but we just gotta let you know that that's the case. Uh, there's a water line replacement. I'm estimating that at twenty, that's also a force account thing. It's a line that folks have someone as well. And then there's some other variables. I whittled the contingency down as far as I could because I took care of some of the variables in there, like the wintering and the water. So two hundred thousand's about as low, but I would recommend we go. So that puts us right back to seven. For total project cost. We have six eight in the budget.
This is the project that took that hit for the half, half million too. So.
Do we have the cap?
We don't have this budgeted, no.
No.
You know, that's not budgeted, but you guys, you know, you know about your cash reserve.
We don't, we've used that to get to here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have to have it today by no means. You may not actually see it, you know, some of these costs till next year. But we wanna let you know.
You gave us a hundred thousand of the normal.
You gave us five hundred thousand.
I thought it was starting to fly.
If we did, that would help, but I don't. Yeah.
No, it's five hundred thou, that's what we have in the approved situation.
Plus two hundred fifty thousand. Holdover from last year. Said you're carrying over money from last year.
So all of the money, all of our extra money that we'd saved up, that's in our budget in, in this program?
Yes.
All, everything we had.
Yeah. Because we had the extra half a million, but we didn't take that last year.
Yeah, that was, yeah, the other item that got, so we, we would have, it would be okay if we had that half a million that we, if we'd have taken the second half of the million last year. We'd be okay, we'd have that, or we had kept the half a million in this year. Either way, we'd have been okay. Uh, but now we're short, we're short that much money. So if you remember, we had the discussion about we were originally the seven two, and we reduced it, but that.
So we see where the base is.
Yeah. But these are known costs. This is the only thing that's, you know, where we put an estimate in for the force account, which is the two hundred thousand, we may not spend all of that. We won't know until we get through the winter next year. But there's, you know, the, the low bidder does not have a big enough crew to put the iron and the people at it that they could to finish it in a year, in one season. So, eh, even though we had an incentive in the project to, if somebody did finish, they would get that as like a bonus. But if you don't have the people, which a lot of contractors don't anymore. That's not possible. So that's, that's an estimate. The water line is an estimate, but it'll probably be.
Somewhere.
Close to there. And then our contingency, of course, it's pretty low.
Yes.
But, uh, there needs to be something there.
Yeah.
In our, our past, our historic, uh, record for where we're at when we're all done with the jobs, we've been pretty close to what was bid. Uh, but if you cut yourself to the quick too early, then you're, you know, we need to respond on construction jobs. It's kind of an immediate thing. And, uh, so it has to be available to keep.
This is a lot more complex.
Yes.
And you're still running contingency.
Yes.
And it's, and you're budgeted, so you've cut, cut it down. But it is, you know, more complex. Honest with ourselves about what we think it's gonna really do.
Well, what we did is, is we took a part of the big, from the BTC, one of the contingencies that we had, which was good, was the wintering, you know, when we wintered over. Well, I put that as a separate line item on this, so that allowed me to drop it down. So if we went five percent, that's like three hundred fifty thousand. So if I add those two together, I'm about four hundred thousand. So, you know, you're right, it would be better to have more, but, and, you know, if something major happened, the contingency, we'd have that ten percent anyway, so. And honestly, there's only so many things, you know, we don't, we're not gonna get a fiber line, chances are, or anything real strange like that. You know, with.
Rock eggs.
Rock eggs, well, we have a big rock eggs item in there. So we do have some stuff built in.
So I, I, tell me if I'm wrong. We took the five hundred out for the budget, knowing that you were gonna do this project and you have to use reserves. Do that. Is that how you close your collar?
No, that's how I recall you guys.
That is how I recall. I do also recall that's not how I recall.
Yes.
We are both correct. Yeah, I mean, I'm curious too, I mean, will some of these expenses, you know, the wintering over stuff, it's actually not gonna be in the budget until next year?
Yes, that's, that's what I mean.
And so we will have an opportunity to revisit it. I mean, I, I always come back to the, you know, once you commit to do something, you have to do it. Yeah, it's gonna cost, that, that's part of the reason for having reserves. Remember those, you obviously can't constantly budget in a way that is, you are not actually using real numbers, that it's going back, going back, going back, especially if you're gonna go back to. I am curious. You know, we're getting to the point in this, even though we're talking about a road project, the construction of this facility is not, you know, they're too different. But the reserve money comes from the same place, the same source. And are we close enough to the end of closing this out? Have any close, accurate idea of how much of contingencies we have left in this project?
Yeah, I can break that back next minute.
I'm just giving, give me some idea, because, you know, last we checked, we had some.
Yeah.
So we have money that we had set aside for this project that we're not gonna expend. Is that a, is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Whether it's five hundred thousand dollars or not is, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah. It's not that much.
It's not optimistic.
Because I think it's only a couple hundred thousand. Might actually get a. Mayor.
Yeah, like, like Jeff said, I think a lot of these things, you know, they're not today expenditures. They're, as we move through construction, actual construction, you know, the contingency piece comes up, and then next sometime late fall, we have to have, and will respond all winter long with the stormwater piece. So that's kind of a late next year into the following year for costs. So. But we need to talk about it now. We haven't awarded, and this is the time to talk since we've opened bids, and we know what most of those expenditures are. Yeah. So. You have time to think about it.
Yeah.
Board tomorrow.
So. What's your timeframe?
They normally take four to six weeks, and, and they said four, I think.
Yeah, they ask for more information, so I think that starts the clock. I don't know, we're, we're gonna try to find something and then, you know, push comes to show there's other avenues.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm still working on the click that path courthouse parking lot. It actually, uh, year back, our, our consultant's been talking with DOE, and we're, we don't have to re-enroll in the voluntary cleanup program, which I think is a good thing, because I don't see anybody that's completed that, um, in less than about fifteen years. So, um, we're just going to, uh, monitor and sample our well that we have. That's about a hundred twenty feet away, two hundred feet, uh, from the site, and, and use that as our sample monitoring well, and continue to monitor that, um, for the next couple of years till we get through this. But, uh, we're not gonna enroll in that program. So, which I think is better.
Well, it's not possible.
Yeah, it's not.
Somebody's listed it.
Yeah.
There's a little addition to that.
Yeah, it's right outside the entrance to the jail.
Yes.
Yeah.
For irrigation.
Yeah. Uh, we'll be, uh, selecting and, uh, get together contracts or agreements for the on calls from our, advertisements. Maintenance side, uh, we're still doing brushing, grading, uh, sanding as needed. And then the west side's still cleaning up. We probably have another week or week and a half of, uh, cleanup from the windstorm at the beginning of the month. Uh, let's see, on the building, let's see, the shades are supposed to be here. Next Monday, they're gonna bring them all the blackouts, um, except for I don't know that they have all the parts for these yet. Uh, they do have this one over here, I think Lee's window, and then the blackouts throughout the rest of the building. So that'll, that'll help. Uh, they started working on the HVAC system, aligning the ducting that wasn't aligned. And the next couple of days are gonna be working on that unit above, uh, D B Jane, actually, that makes all the noise at the lobby entry. And, uh, then once they get done making all of these changes, then they'll reevaluate and see what else needs to be done. But I still believe that there's some design issues that, uh, they're gonna have to work through. So. Uh, but that'll be the longer term, so. Let's see. Shane's boiler, we had, still have one boiler down, the repair parts arrived, and so there, the boiler company's gonna install those, and then we'll have our backup, run two at a time, so they're not, one isn't taking all the load, and if it goes down, you still have the other one. So that's same way as a courthouse system. Uh, let's see. So, radio sites?
Yes, um, we're waiting for Jeff to get back to finalize the building layout and a few other things, but we're still moving forward. We're still planning on doing the road construction around, uh, May, June. And hopefully the building, just a little bit past that, July. August is what I'm shooting for, progressive schedule, and then it's just a matter of, uh, getting the license. That'll be the biggest lead item, the thing that's out of our control. But we're hoping, since we are not asking for frequencies, that it won't. That's the one. Don't know how the FCC is gonna be.
Okay. Should've talked about this when I was in the building, but the dedication schedule, so, um, a date. I don't know if we've finalized a date yet. We talked about March. And so Tuesdays after, uh, your agenda time somewhere between, you know, four to seven. So I don't know, I think, uh, the thought was earlier, uh, rather than later, so the four to six.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I like four to six because people will be in their offices still for the first hour if the public wants to go, not gonna go. Something of that nature, so.
Okay.
As far as which of the three dates, I don't see. Calendar, so. Yeah, but. Any. I'm here every Tuesday.
After the board makes the decision on which date, I will reach out to, uh, ask commissioners, check their availability as we will post it on our website. Send notice to the newspaper.
I'm good with March. We have a state.
Okay, four to six P M, light refreshments. We are, I talked to the health department, that, you know, there's no restrictions on, uh, they have a list of things that you don't need a permit for, and so that would be like cookies and a sheet. If we do a sheet cake, coffee and water, you know, that's kind of light refreshments that we can have available.
Are we doing, are we hosting that downstairs or in here or?
Probably downstairs makes sense. We could set something up either in the lobby area or the, the conference room downstairs, either one. Or we can open the whole thing up and have the big group available. So. You're up on the roof.
That's the after part.
Okay. Yeah, for that, we need a health permit.
Okay.
All right, um, so we'll move forward with that. Um, and I don't know if, I talked to Lee about maybe have, spend it, if you had a few minutes after you're done this morning to walk over next door and talk about, uh, the space there. If that works for you, that, that'd be great. Okay, all right, we'll get back. And then just to kind of note, um, anybody, but, uh, the Wash Dot, uh, the people in Murdoch, I think have gotten together, and they're hopefully gonna have a meeting, this Microsoft Teams meeting sometime this month to talk about gain feedback, even though I think the people from Murdoch already felt like they've done this multiple times. Um, this is Wash Dot's formal process, change speed limits, and so they're gonna do it again. So as soon as they get that set, I'll notify, let you guys know when that is.
And they release their specific plan that you're commenting on or?
I think they're gonna wait, roll it out then, because I think there's a difference between what Wash Dot sees and what they do see.
I mean, based on just, and it go all the information, just lean from Wash Dot's comments as far as what they were.
Yeah.
I think there's a, yeah.
Yeah.
Totally interesting. I'll definitely be, I'll be watching.
You do. So that's it for our list, unless you have.
The jail roof, I wanted to give you an update of the jail roof. Brown did come out. Uh, we got him up here, they looked around, they, pretty sure they isolated the area really with roofs, really don't know. So they'll put a patch on that area. And, uh, we'll have, we'll get it back here. They said, you know, will be the top priority, but there's a lot of prior, top priorities right now, considering the size of their crews. So, uh, they'll get it as soon as they can, and they'll put a patch on it. See how that works.
Basically, we got four years on that roof.
Yeah, that's what they're saying. The roof is, what's happening is it's coming apart between layers, because it's a flat layered roof.
My favorite.
Yeah. And so it's their separation between the layers. So they can see that there's, uh, that we're migrating water in. First layer, and some places, that's why it makes it so difficult to actually find. You gotta find where the water's coming in, but the problem is, is who knows where it's coming in. You make it be coming in from here, but the leaves clear over there, because that's where it finds its way into the second, third, fourth layer. Try to get it taken care of.
Anything else, John?
I have a couple of questions. I brought it up to you guys late last week about the parking. The electric vehicle signs. I keep seeing, as I sit in my office, elderly people pulling it, kind of expecting that to be a handicap spot. It's not, they kind of back up and try to get over here. And I was thinking, instead of having an electric vehicle parking, hold that side down and just put up a thirty minute park. Uh, which would allow for electric, but would also allow for some of our scenes at that point, trying to get into this thing over here. So that was a topic of discussion that I don't know where they're at or you're at, or. Would it be a big issue to change that to a thirty minute instead of an electric?
No, no, and we could make the, the next one or the next two thirty minutes, leave the electric one, and then designate two, two other ones to be the thirty minutes. I mean, that might make a lot of sense, because those are really easy to get into. You know, that's the first thing people see, and that might open up a couple of other spots there for that purpose. Yeah.
I don't know, it won't get out of the electric one at the other side of the building. Kind of the car tow.
Oh.
That might work. Then they might not work there. It's a county vehicle. So we're all beautiful.
Yeah, so if you want, I could do that, I could do one or two thirty minutes.
I wanted to start with one and see how that goes and move up and there.
One?
Start with one.
Okay.
The only other thing I had was vending machine discussion. Nice to have a, uh, vending machine for liquid and, uh, bunches. I don't know where I was looking. I mean, obviously to me, first floor would be better, but when you get down the hall into that little alcove, there's just no electrical sockets down that whole alcove. The only other two places I could even see in the building is at the end of the second floor hallway, where there's kind of a alcove down there, or in the break room, but I wanna make sure it's accessible for citizens that come in for a public meeting or whatever, to be able to grab a water or something like that, so.
So liquid vending, one liquid vending machine? Okay.
For, for sodas, water, things like that, but also like cookies and candies.
Two, okay. Okay.
Preferably accessible to the public. Preferably accessible to the public, that doesn't matter where everybody are, the better. I like first floor better, because that's the floor everybody's on, and if we're having something, public meeting downstairs, where they're kind of up here, they can see the vending machine from walking in rather than before they come out.
Okay.
Whereas setting seniors to the second floor.
Okay. Maybe look around and, and see what makes the most sense.
Oh, yeah. We have some time today, I was hoping to just pick your brain. We didn't get some information back on Sanbar access at Yale, which is favorable when it's down. And there is reference to an upgrade crossing that was granted in 1911.
Oh, man.
So it's really good news.
Yeah.
It locates it by, you know, quarter, quarter section, so it's within a 48 year parcel, which is coincidentally is very, is the, the old mat grade kind of informal crossing is, because it's like, why would the railroad is built one?
Yeah, right.
Because I suspect that is, but it has it specifically defined by at or near an engineer's station with a number.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that has maybe, is that a, is that a reference to the mainline survey that they had? You know, I don't know how, that's what I'm just kind of curious your thoughts as far as, because I've seen those in whole, right away in a road plans, there'll be references to, it's, it's not, it's a reference to the plan of the construction of the road.
Yeah.
Not, it's that document is the thing that they're talking to. I don't know, I mean, actually, now you have as much information as I do.
Yeah, if you, if you sent, if you could send us whatever document it is, we could have Kim.
Yeah, we have Kim do some research on it.
See if we can find the, because I don't know, because I don't know that survey, if it is in the serve, you know, the plan, which I learned a lot, because I did some internet survey on the Spokane, Portland and Seattle Railroad, which that's what that was, which incidentally never went to Seattle, that was, that was a aspirational goal. So it was, but it was really interesting how it got constructed and all the, it was, you know, the fights with the U P and they, how they did everything they could to block the construction and tell, you know, you know, they went bottom stuff.
Sure.
Really interesting stuff, but I, so I'm assuming that, that survey or that, what is available somewhere, I mean, somebody, the railroad certainly has it, but I'm not looking for any help from the railroad.
No, I'll, I'll send it to you. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, we'll dig into it.
Anything else, John? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It was still there, or they, they've gone back. No, I feel the people aren't there. I'm giving the best of it now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. That looks more like the, you know, your last day.
See what you started is?
Hi.
No, I just wanted, as IT was cleaning out their own offices, you can just see IT's come a long way in the last couple of years. It used to be, it used to be the tools of the IT department, so.
Is that a Geiger cabinet?
Yep, civil defense. Okay, if you want this. Maybe the thing you find with it. I checked it out, it's safe, it's not very dangerous. First, I'd like to, good morning. First, I'd like to introduce Rachel, who's going to be our high school work study. She keeps telling me what it's officially called, I'm forgetting, so work study. She'll be here in H R every morning until she graduates this year, it's credit for doing that, so welcome me and Rachel to the, to the group. Well, we're working on that, she's going to be attending meetings with me and working with Casey and my meeting with IT and Janice, she'll kind of just follow us around and we'll have her help us do some things that she, that, that she can, so just trying to give her as much work experience and exposure to as many different aspects of county government, like today, she's able to change her schedule so she can be here and see how we present to the commissioners, how we interact with the elected, so.
How many hours a day are we done?
Two hours in the morning from eight to 10.
I told her last, I did this in Wasco County, the student didn't talk to me for 10 years still, and they said they'd never go into H R, so I'm going to try to.
Oh, it is worse, they can drop shot adolescence up here.
There you go. So good morning, this morning, we're going to start off with some IT, issues that we'd like to discuss with you. I tried to do Jeff's thing, the opera, to do a little rap music, but we're going to, we'll stick to the agenda.
You gotta ease into that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I know, he's still a camera shot.
Although extra points if you can incorporate the Geiger now.
Website redesign, you want to talk about the website redesign with Civic Plus?
Basically, in our contract with Civic Plus, we get a redesign every couple of years to completely go through the website, rebuild it. We haven't taken advantage of that yet, and we were hoping to this year, that you guys felt it was something you'd like to pursue.
As you listen, that was on my list a year ago, so I'm okay with everybody else.
It's a major project, it involves all the departments and.
Right, there's no cost.
Well, there's a cost.
Yeah, we pay for it.
Yeah, just already.
Yes.
And unfortunately, it's, you know, we're down one in IT, so that, so we got to push it to the end of the year. Last time we checked, they were six months out anyway, being on their calendar. So it does involve all the departments, elected, elected offices to some degree, so. You know, your thoughts on it?
Yeah, it's just, ours is so outdated, you start looking at it, it comes like Yakima, you know, that little search bar to drop down. What are you trying to do, jail inmate roster, click, there it is. How do I get it concealed in here, let's click, boom, there it is, oh, look, I can get the application, I can fill it out online, it is insurance. We're still in the still, so if we could get anywhere near those things, I think it would help people not answering the phone.
So we probably reach out, if it's, if you're okay, we'd reach out to the elected offices and the departments, make sure everybody's, probably no good time for everybody. If we go time to this, see if we can stagger it out, if we have to do it all at once, or for Civic Plus, to see if our federal offices and departments, feel it's a good year, if they can't commit to it, then, then we're not going to get the product that we need. There may be a better time.
There is no such thing as a good time now, whether the, you can't ever.
One thing, will there be an opportunity in the redesign to do some analysis on flood functions before actually do use? Like Dan was saying, like that drives me crazy sometimes, and I had, I had went through a, I think this was three or four years ago, where it was, it was actually a NACO Congress where they, somebody was presenting, and one of the things that they looked at was that they, they looked at what things the public was accessing, what the frequency of what, and then they tried to build their, I can only, like. What they were trying to.
Can you see it?
So that you don't end up, because I don't care for when the, you know, you go on a website and it's like, I am looking for, all I want to know is what time the building is open, whatever this, and it's buried, so, you know, 12 screens down and something. Then they made this, the outfit that had done this actually went and looked at that and they found out that, oh, 70% of the people are looking for these three things and build things kind of accordingly around.
I believe we have a Google Analytics tool built into it, that we could look at that kind of information, I'll have to double check.
I mean, it's not something I want, but I, I do know that that is, you know, sometimes they build, they build all these functions into things that nobody ever uses, and then they don't put things in that people do use, it's like, so.
Yeah, they should be able to have that data from other counties on which drive downs where it's getting used, and so. We're not necessarily re-attending these.
But we take that information into Google Analytics, it should, what ours is, where they may deviate from other counties on, what they're looking for, we can tune up, we should be able to.
Yeah. Constantly do it, you know, everybody has other things going on, it's something else.
We'll reach out to the department offices, Civic Plus to find out when we can get on their schedule and see if there's some track work we can do before that actually gets here, so we're not doing it all the way. On the, since we tend to the date, you should have an R and P for a backup server. We can discuss that with you during the budget process. It's the end of life, it's out of capacity, not expendable, and we are going to use the $69,000 plus dollars that are left over in the old 506 fund to offset some of the cost of this, and we discussed that during the budget too, so this device isn't included in the budget you approved this year. If you have any questions this afternoon. Okay, reduction of PCs during the budget, we talked about, we estimate around 100 pieces, additional PCs of me having the cavity that we should be able to eliminate, some of all of those over time. And we started that process, for instance, this year, 28 computers are, the warranty expires, meaning they're up for replacement. So we reached out to those offices and departments, asking if we could reduce down to laptop of the docking station versus replacing one or multiple pieces, the laptop and the desktop, so we'll keep you informed how that's going. And we did talk about during the budget, that's probably a multi-year process to do it. So we started that process.
Are we, are we doing their discussion, if they said, nope, we need both, you're just saying, I'll be fine, give it a go?
Pretty much, yeah, at this point.
Well, we need a good reason, because we would be working out to about $2,000 a year each laptop.
I'd say closer to a thousand, but yes, it's a lot.
With all the software and everything.
Right.
Kind of would like it, they had to come explain to us what they could do.
What I'm trying to do is circle back, I checked Shelby, and like today, I've come out and I'll circle back to the director of the elected, you know, have discussion. There may be some, you know, we're not assuming they're not good reasons, but trying to make sure they understand why we're doing it.
I understand when you're doing, I love G I S stuff, or you're doing some sort of engineering that requires desktop with massive horsepower, graphics cards, but for most people that just want to be able to have a laptop, they can go somewhere versus the regular desktop. I figure if you can get rid of 100 pieces, it's $100,000 a year in savings.
Yep, not to mention the time that IT takes to, to update it, they have to update them and bring them into the shop. It's very dangerous, well. Okay, we'll keep you informed how that, that process.
Oh, sorry, it's on that topic. You had the computer lifespan at five years, right?
Yes, correct.
Talking about it, can they go six or will they not go six?
Um. Some.
In five years, is technology better now than it was 10 years ago when we made that?
In some cases, I mean, some counties will do like three years for a laptop and six years for a desktop. In the past, I've heard of that, but now most desktops have laptop hardware in them. In some cases, we don't replace, if we feel that the PC is not heavily used, we'll let it go until it dies and then replace it then, but the five-year standard is easier to maintain, yeah, budget for, and plan for.
I just, I guess my question is, how many, I mean, you can't be getting, you know, $5 for a five-year-old $500 laptop. When we auction something off, I want to make sure.
We don't auction, we don't auction them off. We dispose of them via the, or via the transfer station.
Through the hard drive, yeah.
In the past, we got basically nothing for them, so it was decided it wasn't worth the time to auction them off.
That's, that's kind of my thinking, but I want to make sure that, I guess it's safe to take it, as far as we can take that without becoming a liability to IP to keep it around.
Yes, I, I think that is the case. Yeah, I believe it's pretty much the case.
Then finally for IT, there was a, sorry, I'm losing the voice, Jeff's got his wish, I'm losing my voice. We had a couple of management issues in the last audit. We met with the auditors, they were in the secure information, they're easily fixed, and the auditor gave us some suggestions and how to fix them, we're working on that now, so they will not be an issue next year. We won't go into too much more detail because of the nature of, but they're easily fixed and, or actually, one's fixed and the other one's not currently. So let you know we're not ignoring that. Anything else for IT, did everything?
I don't think so.
Mr., is anything else for IT? Questions, my air.
Where are we at to the rollout for being able to use phones so that every laptop?
Uh, we're actually exploring a different option, it still uses your phone, but we're, we're still in the beginning phases of testing right now, using Duo instead of RSA, but we haven't made any firm decisions yet.
Can I get signed up for the Duo one, because I was doing this and then.
Oh, it's not working anymore?
Well, I was using it and then, yeah, it pretty much locked me out, and so I'm back to using RSA.
Uh, yeah, we could deploy Duo to your computer.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Hi, guys. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a brief update on ARPA funds and their requirements. With the final ruling being rolled out of, within the April 1st date, they have also made some adjustments to how we're classified and when reporting is to be done, how it's to be done. So we are now considered a tier five, which is basically counties that residents, $250,000, 250,000 people or less who receive less than $10 million. So our reporting is now due, instead of January 31st, it's now due April 30th. And then annually thereafter, it is my intent to report all of our, all of the $4.2 million as lost revenue, since we can report up to $10 million without any revenue calculations now. I'm going to wait till April to file that report, just to play safe, so that we're, after the interim final rules officially rolled out and accepted. Any questions on that? Okay, so the page that you're looking at are some very preliminary numbers. We, the auditor's office and Pam and Gray have got the first closing rule done. They have another one scheduled February 12th, and then there'll be, I believe, one more after that. Um, they have another one scheduled February twelfth, and then there'll be, I believe, one more after that. So the top part is, um. Calculations with the ARPA loss revenue funds transferred. Currently, they're still working through those transfers and multiple transfers and JVs, um, within the system right now, so it's not in our system as a transfer. But that's the simulation of what it'll look like. Um. We currently ended up with seventeen point four million dollars of actual revenue. Which is five hundred over what we budgeted for. Um, our actual expenditures came in seventeen point one, just three point four less than what we budgeted. After all of the supplementals. So, um, that puts us at three point one million dollars to fund balance. One point two five is reserve fund balance, and that'll bring us with a unreserved preliminary number of one point eight.
Perfect. Uh, by nine over under. Yeah. Under, yeah. Parentheses, let's just say.
Three point four?
Right, shouldn't that be?
No, we under budget by three point.
Expenditure, the parentheses are good.
Yeah.
Revenue side is.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that is confusing, it seems like it should be the other way.
Historically, this has been, uh, used with a ten-year average. Because of the last five years, um. Having some massive adjustments to it, and with inflation rates climbing the way they are, I I ratcheted that back to a five-year average for forecasting. For revenue, the actual revenue forecast in that line item, uh, does have the forecasted. Less the anticipated additional sales tax revenue. Um. And then the expenditure portion of that on the bottom, uh. Where it says nineteen million, that is accounting for the average plus the six, the six percent inflation as well. If you look at the, look at the bottom, you're looking at, um, you know, and then the forecasted sixteen point six revenue with, uh. You know, forecasted expenditure with it with the inflation rate being nineteen. These are very rough preliminary numbers, though, uh, the highlight of it is, is that, uh, fund balance in the general fund was taken care of. Correct. We would have had, we had burned, we would have burned into our reserved fund balance by eighty seven thousand dollars.
Or we would have cashed for some reserves.
Yes.
I mean, the bottom line is, we all know that revenues can't keep up with expenditures when they'll stop doubt. Plus or minus, and expenses just rise faster than. The.
May I see it as have the. Our additional four percent. Proportional inflation on all the other costs that we already, you know, it's coming. It's about a million dollar deficit. Luckily, we've got these ARPA funds, but some people want to put a million dollars towards, you know, finance systems. Cut into that.
Is that an accurate assessment? I don't understand that three billion. So.
On a five-year.
A five-year average with six percent inflation.
With six, so that's built on a six percent.
Yes.
Okay, I I I will back my.
Inflation rate, um, end of the year, it's what, six point eight, I believe. We we knew that sustainability was going to be a challenge from here on out. Or it has been actually, because my balance has been declining rapidly.
We won't know until next year if that one point eight continues, or if we flatten it out a little bit, or. Been higher, we didn't start way higher, so whether that one point eight continues to decline or. Make some significant changes, let's flatten it out a little.
The next page. Summarizing. Into twenty twenty-one as of January thirty first, after that first closing rule, um, where the revenues came in by department or fund. Um, what they were in comparison to budget. Then the original budget compared to the amended budget identifying the supplementals. And then where the expense actuals came in. Person to the amended budget. Total, um, looks like we use seventy-four percent of budget. Um, the general fund used eighty-three percent of budget. There are still some areas that, um. That if you look at, that are gonna pop out of you, um. Let's see, the road funds, uh, has, it appears that they're short on revenue, they were working through it with billions of grants, uh, they have received two million dollars. Of course, those are gonna come in in twenty twenty-two, so there's gonna be some offset from years there. Um, and public, public health is still, um, working through removing those FEMA pass through dollars as well.
That's why we don't, we don't ever spend everything with budget. Eighty-four percent we're we're at, we've spent ninety percent or ninety-five percent.
And some departments did spend hundred percent, ninety-nine percent, you know, ninety-eight percent of their budget. Those tend to be like. Like, public defense.
East district or west district.
Yeah, they're they're made up, there are some departments in the general fund, as you all know, that that is made up of mostly people. Um, there's not a lot of fluff built into their budgets at all. One twenty-five has some additional ins and outs, uh, because we're, you know, we received the land, the ARPA funding, and then we send it back out. Some of that double O county going on there. As far as revenue goes, uh. I would have to go back and, I didn't, I didn't go dig into that one too much last night.
Original budget was two point six seven.
Oh, and the additional, so that would be, well, or that would be ARPA funds. Inns, ins and outs. Could you have to budget the, uh, you can't just put a revenue in, you have to put a placeholder for the expense, and then we have to move the expenses to transfer out, which is another expense, so.
Okay, questions?
The next packet, um. Is just follow-up from our workshop, uh, you know, I had, I had said that I was moving to fillable PDFs for supplemental processes and budget build process. Um, working with IT, uh, we have a more streamlined approach to it, um. And I'm going to use the help desk portal, so the first page would identify, just kind of gives you a picture diagram of what that's gonna look like for department heads and electives. Uh, they will go to the help desk portal, they'll create a new request, and they'll select finance it from there, they'll be able to, uh. Like the supplemental, um, process or during the budget build process, uh. They also put in, um, capital improvement requests and IT requests, so I'll, I will build those within that finance section for the build process as well. Um, doing it this way, there's an audit trail with everything, uh, it will email email me. They will still have to do the fillable PDF because the, the form in this platform isn't. Quite dynamic enough for that I would need with tables or not, but I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be great and a little bit more streamlined. And. There will be, absolutely, um. So the next part of it is what the budget, the supplemental budget packets are gonna look like. Um, I got hammered quite a bit this last year on supplementals, um, trying to make it more clear, um, identifiable, easier for you guys as well. So table of contents, and then the the next page will be the change list request, it'll be my analysis and list of the requests. But at the very bottom, it's gonna have, whether you guys, how many of those were previously approved by you, be it verbal or resolution. Um, identify which ones are budget neutral, meaning that they, you know, they have the revenue there to, uh, for the expense. Um, which ones require budget intervention? Are we gonna need to transfer from cumulative reserve over? Um, what is a carryover, um, request? Any technical adjustments, the ins and outs, you know, that that we may need to do on the accounting side of things. Um, and a new request altogether. So there'll be. Three different types of views of those. And then the actual supplemental, the narrative that the department heads and electors will will need to be submitting. Um, I have added the percent of match or any, any grant stipulations that are required. Uh, they'll have to select whether it's an ongoing or a one-time request. All of that will be published on the website and available through the agenda is the plan.
Do you really feel that even if they've never put priority of will or?
I can think of some instances, do I think that they might not, maybe not, until after talking to me?
Might.
Yeah.
You might.
Be mine. I highest priority question I.
I think we should, it would be helpful to identify what you consider a high priority, a medium priority, and a low priority.
I like your great questions on that. Question for me, that I would love to see others, have we looked for any grant? Or you just kind of referred to us for your first lineup? Your first ask, oh, I'm sorry.
Doesn't have to be granted, it's other sources of funding. Partner sources.
Tell me you have, or tell me you don't, you either do your homework before you take.
I can do my homework, a little prayer.
Don't even do my homework, but it's a high priority.
And the last page is screenshots, um, I told you that I would be developing the budget Google calendar for everybody to be using, um. It's just a screenshot of how it'll look, you guys are fairly familiar with how I operate with the Google calendar, but. For supplemental requests, you know, there's a link to the help desk portal, um, an explanation on what they need to do on deadlines, the RCW listed within there as well, so. Should there be any questions, they can see that there, you know, what that RCW might be, blackout days of looking at county fair, um, when you guys might be gone. Any tasks that need to happen are in blue, which is mostly for me and the auditor. And then Shelby has offered to assist, uh, with the finance webpage development too, so we'll be getting on that. Since it's a moment.
That's your primary job is to just always provide.
Need to buy some rest of the glasses for everybody. Bring in the tuba glue.
But you've got to check the fuel gauge.
Yeah.
This one's more on the other side of HR, I just got an email, Washington, CARES Act is delayed for eighteen months. So you, and it says, any employer that withheld payroll tax beginning January one.
The auditor's worked on. With a brief discussion the other day, so I think she's got PA for some additional information. My understanding, Casey might know more, but I know Brenda and I have a brief discussion the other day. I don't know, Brenda's online or if.
Yeah, I'm here, but I can only hear your side of the conversation.
Uh, Jake just got notice notified about the CARES Act being, uh, delayed eighteen months, and that we have to reimburse folks that. Conversation you and I had the other day about. Reversing folks for the money that. We took out of the checks.
Yes. Yes. Heather's been communicating with Pam, working, trying to get kind to cooperate.
People thought. You know. All right. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
And, uh, good luck with him as your new, uh, two-hour day boss. I hope you have a sense of humor, because you will by the end.
It'll be fun, won't it?
Yeah.
I'll give, I'll give her a good break, last of my jokes. All right, so, uh, HR, we have a few things you'd like to discuss with me. Um, as you may recall, uh, during negotiations. Public Works, we were having a discussion with the union about moving the. Lead surveyor out of the one bargaining unit and moving them over to the supervisor bargaining unit. We have a tentative verbal agreement with the union on that, we'll be drafting a memorandum of understanding to bring to the commissioners for. We had to, uh, negotiate it to salary and make some changes, and we're all in verbal agreement of that, so that was one of the last things that we. Do on the public works negotiation, so, but anyway, we have a, we have a tentative agreement, we'll bring that forward to you once we get that documented. Review by all parties, so I just wanted to keep you informed on that. The other pieces that, uh, continue to work with facilities and grounds, folks, how to move them from one grade to the next. We needed to document a path for them to, uh. Checklist or things they have to learn before they can move up. To the new pay grade, so we're working on that, and, uh. We'll bring that to you as well, once we get the agreement. That path forward for those folks. This management review, just wanted to let you know that, working with the PA, we've, uh, both determined that the. Process, the forms, the policy for safety and accident, reporting accidents, reporting LNI claims, reporting, uh, public reporting accidents. The forms, there's various forms out there, it's kind of decentralized. So the PA and I'd like to, we're gonna review that, look at other counties, see if we need to update the forms. And then go back to a more centralized process so that everybody's in the loop, needs to be in the loop, and. If a department settles a claim and the PA doesn't know about it, it could set a precedent for future claims. And so it's, uh, nothing intentionally being done, it's just kind of, kind of, uh.
Everybody else.
Yeah, and so, uh, Dave and I agree to work on that together, and we'll come back with a more streamlined form and, yeah. Bring it forward to you and then roll it out to the departments and the offices, so we're all using the same form, the same process, basically map it out. So we know what's up, comes in, where's it go, who has to see it, who has to approve it, what's the process, and then. Public Works is, uh, asking for that as well and helped them a lot too, so just keeping you informed. Things we're starting to work on. With the PA's office. Uh, civil service, uh, as you know, uh, the employee who currently is the civil service examiner, which is required by law. Is an employee whose last day is today, she's agreed to stay on. She's agreed to stay on as the civil service examiner. And that function has been housed in the juvenile department. So we needed to find a place for her to work and the computer to work on. And what we did was we were looking into it as civil service rules and process and budget and stipend that we pay. It's not been reviewed for decades. And so what we've talked about, and I read this by the chair of the week, is a we're going to move the civil service function in HR, at least house it in one of our cubicles. And she can have access to our office and our copying machine, there's a phone, we set it up. And IT's gonna provide a loader laptop, so she'll have the piece of equipment. We're required by law to have this function. We're very appreciative that she's willing to continue to do it. She's been doing it for a very long time. Been doing a very good job at it. In the meantime, if you're approval, I'll undertake a review of 11 counties that are comparable to us and we'll look and see, look at their rules, look at their process, look at their budget. Is this position a contract position, is it a casual position, is it an employee position? How are other counties dealing with it? Talking to PA, we'll work with him on this as well. Is a required position in other states, they've been able to roll civil services in HR, cannot do that in state. It has to be, that's a civil service board, which you appoint three members to. And the rules are 42 pages long, so it's a, it's a very detailed and complicated aspect. The law enforcement, it applies to the corrections, the commission and non-commission. And it carries as much weight as collective bargaining. So there are rules that we have to follow that carry penalties if, if we don't follow that. So we're appreciative that she's willing to continue in this role. If it was more time to look into it, come back, you would maybe waste update it or refresh it or maybe do it a little bit different. We're okay with, with all of that. We just thought we had a cubicle that she could work at. You know, additional costs.
Yeah, the one final bit, but this breaks up. The it screams, what if she wasn't fine? Where would we be? We checked in those two are frustrating, frustrating. To do the people that do this job leave behind a free rate buyer to hand to the next person that started up their lending curve.
Yeah, she's not an employee. I mean, this role. Anymore.
As this, as this position, this isn't, this isn't through payroll for us. She's paid through AP.
So we're hanging at that as well, but the short answer is no. If, if she was willing to do it, she'd be in a learning mode real quick. So, but this, this buys us some time to do that. It has to be a separate function, it'd be housed somewhere like HR. Possibly there is restrictions of who can do it and who can't do it and how it's done. But this gives us time to look into all of those things. But it's just something most people don't know exists, but it's very important and we're required by law to have it. So.
And you know why it was? I was gonna say why it was in juvenile probation, but I guess the stipend was going to the person, the person happened to work.
That former director allowed them to use their equipment, their phone and.
It's just something to me that always seems like it should have been in the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I don't know if it can be. That's what we're looking into, Dave may be on the phone. I'm not sure because they, they're the ones that provide the list of potential hires and civil service has a role in discipline and hiring. Separate from the sheriff, the sheriff has to follow the civil service rule.
I don't think it's actually designed to be not.
Right.
Because it is so that there's separation.
Checks and balance. And I've done this in Oregon, I've civil services, I've earned dealt with civil service, so I have a basic understanding of the role of place and collective market. So we'll take a good look at it and she's happy to stamp and drill that she is. So you're okay with, at least the short term, we'll just continue to do it that way. Okay, that's one that. Trouble or? On the same. Any questions for HR?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I think there's more, I think there was a couple of each other.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for lunch. All right, we're going to follow the regular business meetings of the county commissioners to order. Start with budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Stand. Why nation, your God, the goodness of God.
Chairman, I would make a motion to be approved, the business agenda as presented.
I'll second. There's a motion in a second to approve the business agenda, all those papers. All right, motion carries.
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes for January 11th, 2022.
I will second motion.
Did you make any changes?
Only I thought one.
There's a motion in a second to approve the business meeting, the general minutes for January 11th, 2022. Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are going to move into citizen comment from now until 1:25. We got 32 people online. We will, as always, begin in the room and you will have three minutes. If you ask any questions, please don't expect an answer from us right now. At 1:25, we will respond if a commissioner, so deeds. Is there anybody in the room? Yes, come forward, tell us your name.
Susan Kelsey Golden Dell. How are y'all? Waiting for that letter to go away. Everybody keeps telling me it's gonna get worse in February, but I have hope. I'm here to talk about the impact on the county or to the county for public record requests. And I know that this is a really good tool that we have as citizens, as people in this county, the ability to request information to see how departments are operating and accountability. It also helps us when we are researching a project and that impacts our lives. But I think that there's a cost to this processing. And as far as I understand, the only car, or the only re, the only money that ever comes in is only on the cost of paper. And so if it's done electronically, then there, it seems to me that there is no cost passed on to the person requesting it. However, when I when I went to the 2022 preliminary budget posted on your website, which I thought this was voted on, so I'm not sure if I have the correct one, but I looked through the table of contents because Dave knows that I'm a bottom line kind of person. And I could not find any information on the costs to the county for processing public requests. And I understand that there's been a high volume that has been coming in. So looking at year 2021, and my questions are, and I'll submit this when I'm done, is do you have a record of public requests from each department? Does each department log each request with the amount of hours and money that spent on that employee researching and compiling the report and then sending it to that person? And, and then my last question at this time is if the department, any department in the county is experiencing a high volume demand, are essential services for the people of the county being compromised? So right now that's where I'm gonna start. And that's it. I'm letting you off easy today.
Perfect time. All right, going online, I have a hand up from, it looks like Bern Harpul.
Hi, good afternoon. I promise I'm not becoming a board of county commissioner groupie, but it's just so fun to hang out with you guys. Thanks, so first of all, just thanks so much to all your staff. I've had interactions with them the last few weeks and they're wonderful. Megan Taylor helped me out a couple of days ago with a record request. Delightful person. Number two, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Christopher's issue with the electric car parking. And he is exactly right. My son tried to use it the other night. He's the foreman for your building, finishing construction. And the electric car parking is no, is not operational because the service hasn't been signed up. It worked for 10 uses and now it's not working anymore. So if you could look into that. But finally, most important, that the draft for the final report of the federal highway forest service and WASD on the congestion of Highway 14 is due the, is due February 4th. The entire study was in a road on Click Attack County. So I would hope you guys are listed as a a member of the, of a, of the group. But what I want to let you know, and I know you can't discuss it unless you're all together. So we and Lyle are responding to the report adversely that they fully admit that the Click Attack Spit is a dangerous congested area. But since it's not officially designated, they're not going to study or recommend any further action on it. We are going back to them saying we are certainly working with the county and the forest service to get us a designated spot. And just because it isn't designated, doesn't mean it's still dangerous. And we're gonna try to get them to put that in the report. We're saying that you guys support this because you endorsed our resolution. So hopefully you can talk about this and respond to the the federal highway Highway 14 congestion report draft that's due this Friday. Thanks.
You must heard. Back into the room. Okay, online, if you would like to provide public comment, please star six, unmute your phone, turn on your video, wave your hand, let us get our attention. Not see. Okay. Well, we will be sitting here for the next little while. If you change your mind and would like to give a public comment, please get our attention. Oh, there's somebody.
Yes, commissioners, thank you. I would just like to direct you to the American Planning Association, planning.org. Several months ago, I sent you emails regarding this organization in which planning directors can use this as a tool. And I wanted to inform you that several of publications were just published within the year. And it warns counties that the ordinances that were made in 2010 should be revised when it comes to industrial solar plants. And there are several important webinars happening right now. And I would encourage each of our, our decision makers to go through that training. Because as we've seen last week from the hearings that had taken place regarding 1871. And Commissioner Christopher, I'd like to thank you for attending that and making your appearance on that. However, I thought that it was kind of disappointing that we weren't mentioned as a county as hosting, you know, the largest, the state's largest solar facility, Lund Hill. And I, I just want to, like I said, I just want to point you guys in that direction. There's several screenshots that I have taken that I, from, from, from those publications, and I want to send it to you again. And hopefully you'll have a chance to respond. And then in addition, as you know, I belong to several different Facebook groups regarding industrial solar projects happening throughout our, our country. And I wanted to ask, I know some of you are involved in the fire department and maybe you can answer this question in that five minutes that you leave for after a comment. But it seems that these projects are Class C projects for the fire classification. And so they also emit toxic fumes when they, when a wildfire swoops through those facilities. And I just wanted to ask what qualifications are fire, our fire district jet chief Jensen, what, what qualifications does he have in order to make a emergency response plan for this? And when will the citizens have access to those plans from Lund Hill? And that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Could we get your, your name and address, ma'am?
It's Rosale Demick and I live in the Golden Dell area.
Back to the room. Anybody changed their mind yet? All right, back online. If you would like to provide public comment, please unmute yourself, star six, raise your hands, turn on your video. You're here to listen. Okay, you change your mind, let us know. It's like the kids. I will mention again, if you would like to get public testimony, comment, star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Turn your video on. Mute yourself, get our attention, wait, raise your hand. Love to hear. Lynn Mason.
Thank you, commissioners. Since nobody is speaking, I would like to comment on a Facebook post that Commissioner Anderson posted recently that had a lot of interesting comments on it. And it was about development, particularly housing development in Clickittack County. And he mentioned in his post that the county purchased some land to develop and is looking for funding to finish or to start that development. And I guess the top priority is for retirement housing. Um. One of the commenters said that Gina Mossbrucker has said at many of her public meetings that there's money available for affordable housing. I would after the comments, like to hear more about that from the commissioners and also to address the fact that there is a huge need for affordable family housing. And that became particularly clear in the comments and lengthy conversation that that happened after Commissioner Anderson's Facebook post. The fact that a lot of the housing stock has been bought up by investors and continues to be bought up by investors leaves little for hardworking families to access the American dream of owning their own home. And these same investors seem to be displaying predatory practices of increasing people's rents exorbitantly. Uh, in this case, commenters said up to $650 increase from one month to the next. That's not sustainable. That's not realistic for working families on a limited budget to absorb into their costs. No matter what the developer has to say about the reason for that, it is it's it's not feasible for families. So what's happening in White Salmon is that the the service industry people are going to end up leaving.
Lynn, I'm sorry, your time is up, but that was a very poignant last sentence you
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will continue. If you would like to provide a public comment, please unmute yourself. Star six.
Do you guys in the audience see glare when you see that screen over there?
No. And I will comment that you've now got a little writing on the screen.
It kind of works in China, doesn't it?
I mean, I can't see it, but
See, it kind of works in China, is what I just said.
No, there is no glare.
Say, we're getting it from the window, but well, that's what I was gonna ask. Eventually we're gonna have curtains, but if that projector needed to come down to show it over there, sure, you guys can see it just like
So can people hear you now on the thing there?
I don't know. They tweaked our mic this morning to affect the game. Our desk mics and podium mics are all supposed to be here tomorrow or the next day. So that will end up showing the same TV that's over there. So yes, no, the mic people finally
What is that?
That will end up showing the same thing that the TV is doing for people over there that can't necessarily see the TV.
Oh, I was catching.
Well, eventually you're gonna have
Nobody else is going. I guess I, since it was brought up by Lynn, this post, I'll read the post so that it's in the record. And it says, in the past year, the number of new single-family dwelling permits have doubled in unincorporated Clickittack County. The city is likely faced with this demand as well. Building costs are roughly $300 per square foot. A buildable lot is 160 to 250,000. We live in paradise and every person I meet up at the mountain, their goal is to live in the door. Interest rates are low, construction supplies are scarce, and there is an abundance of cheap money. You cannot build new affordable housing in market market conditions like this. Someone is taking the risk locally, paying astronomical prices for materials on a long-term bet. Sadly, community members demonize it. We have someone investing real dollars in the community to provide it needed apartments. He could easily take that money and put it in the market for other investments that do not help provide housing for our community. Do you see anyone else building multifamily high-density apartments? We have another need as well. There is a funding gap to build the new assisted living facility of a few million dollars. Who here is willing to sell their stock investments to invest in senior housing for 3% ROI? Personally, I'm thankful to the people and businesses who are choosing to invest here locally to fill the actual needs of the community. And Ms. Mason is correct, there were quite a few comments. And what I was speaking to in reference to that was the White Salmon Assisted Living and Memory Care Unit, which is Columbia Cascade Housing Corp. Baby. It is a 52-unit facility with 36 assisted living units and 16 memory care units. Mixed income with 75% private pay and 25% Medicaid. They have capital sources from Clickittack County for a land lease, which is what I was referring to, and that was $650,000 that was spent on the land. There's a Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Trust Fund of 1.8 million that's committed. USDA rural development community facilities direct loan of 13,500,000. The underwriting was in process. And they are still looking for about 3.25 million of private equity or private dollars in order to bridge that gap. They're proposing, I think it was a 3% ROI. Oh, is it four? Oh, 4%. And so that was what I was referencing. If anybody online. Oh. Stop there. Sir, would you like to give public comment? Oh, that might spark some conversation. Is there anybody online who would like to provide public comment? I mute yourself. Regulate solar now is, did you want provide public comment? Kind of keep with the white space somehow. Okay, if not, I will open up for my seatmates. Would either of you like to comment on, or respond to the comments that have been sure, Commissioner Christopher?
So for Ms. Kelsey's questions about public records draft, you can keep a record with somebody's requests, public records. We are now trying to advise our staff to keep track of the we use the term man-hours, but people hours it takes to fulfill said said record request because that's gonna factor into the dollar amount of records. Yes, we don't get a charge that very much of the electronic stuff because those charges are all set by statute. So yes, we have a couple of people in the county that it probably costs the taxpayers in the estimate range from $8,000 to $100,000 man-hours. Does that hurt our ability to provide essential services? To interpretation, if they're doing that, they can't do something else. So yeah, that's that's kind of what I got for that in a nutshell. Bern talked about the electric car part, getting used up all of our street free stuff last night. The next service. And that's, that's all I will do at this time.
Mr. Suck.
Yeah, I would concur with my seatmates, Ms. Kelsey, as far as we we are getting, I would see a significant number of posts. Those, that's the law and it is, it is it's unfortunate that a few folks seem to have weaponized it as far as to make multiple, multiple public records requests, really do the same information. I support public, you know, open public, open public access to information. There is nothing, you know, anything that we have is belongs to the public and the public should be able to see it. But unfortunately, the a few folks that are really utilizing that service are having an impact as far as it costs money. It does adhere to your question as far as you didn't see it as a budget item. We don't budget it by a specific line item. It's embedded in both the staff cost and supplies and all that. It's just, it's in there. We have asked staff, especially with this extraordinary level of asks that are coming to try to document that as far as we have some sense because we we need hard numbers. We have asked, frankly, this goes back for several years, that we need some legislative fixes as far as to public records, not to not in any way to stymie people from getting public records, but to eliminate the incentive for it to be used improperly, or at least for my opinion, improperly, where it's used both as a weapon and a tool. And and also to remove the financial implications because if a public records request is not fulfilled correctly, there are penalties that accrue from the county that actually get paid to the individual. And we, this county has at least in one instance that I'm aware of, we've actually had to pay for someone, it was, it was, it was a request that they weren't from the county. They were, they did this in several counties and it was a way to make money. And so we have asked the legislature to tighten up the language and they keep asking us, get us some real what the impacts and what it costs. And so we're trying to do that, but that's again is more you know, it's more load on staff to document all this stuff and so, but is it having an impact on providing essential services? Anytime we're using dollars for that, it's like we don't have a lot of extra dollars to, it's going to have staff, I would say, particularly in you know, staff only has so much bandwidth and capability. Busy doing all this stuff, other stuff. So I would say, yes, I believe it is.
Yes, you may. So when I was a citizen in the room, I asked for public records one night. I asked for the attendance records at a public meeting. And there was eight pages of it costing whatever dollar or something. It's the standard public request that we we like to see. For instance, another one that we're currently working on and have been for months is I want every incoming and outgoing email, every text, every chat, every message, every note made by any of the three commissioners over a period of two months. Can you imagine all the time to scan all those emails, send them, because they're, they're all just basic, I mean, a lot of trash, you know, but that's what you have to work, so that's gotta go out and it's hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of stuff. While they're on a fishing expedition looking for a specific item that they just can't find.
New topic. I just didn't, I didn't want to leave Mr. Harpo out as far as on the Highway 14 congestion. Yes, we should be commenting as far as that they're, they're not going to, there is no plan for the file access, spit access. But at least should have a placeholder because everybody acknowledges that there's already a problem there. The washout is gonna fix it, but at least keep it on there as far as that they're aware.
Do you know, Commissioner Sock, have you happened to accidents there? Because that's when I deal with washout, it's, we fix it, but you can't show us there's been
We want to document.
And we need documented accidents. The primary one that I've dealt with forever is you've got here's you've got kayakers, you've got everybody untell something.
Car accidents, what have they mounted, or whatever that is.
They have lots of reflections. Which actually has if you guys don't mind, I'd like to finish off because you guys sucked all the air out of me. So I would like to just respond to Rosiel. Thank you for your comments and I will look forward Ms. Demick to the information you sent. I tried to do my research and sit through trainings and lessons. So thank you and I'll look forward to seeing that. And Bern, thank you for letting us know about the report draft. I'm positive our public works is looking at it and is engaged, especially on the multilane eight location as well as down there at the mound. And then I think I responded to we did use a little bit of time. I have one person, one last person. Tracy, would you like to give public comment?
Yes, I would. Good afternoon, sirs. So my comment is in regard to the the description of what now is in today's minutes are the the mental health first responders is what it says. And I I am asking about the first responder definition for these jobs. You you know, the proclamation for the 911 dispatchers were made by Clickittack County in March of 2021, claiming that the 911 dispatchers were first responders. And the Bureau, BOLI and the Oregon's, or not the Oregon, but the Occupational Safety and I can't remember what it's called, but administrative, as administration says, that first responders are people that are actually on scene that do scene size up. And they do triage on scene, that they're actually not people that sit in an office and take phones. And I'm not trying to discredit their job. I know it's important and they do a great job. But when we, when, when those occupational health job descriptions become broadly used as mental health first responders and 911 dispatcher first responders, what happens is the grants that the federal government give out for first responders that go to the scenes are then available to anybody who has a designated first responder classification. And so I question the the reasoning for that and and the benefit for the county for documenting a a state job. As a first responder when the federal government and the bully does not. So. Any comments?
I'm looking at the agenda right now and it designates the county's crisis responders.
And it it gives an RCW that 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 goes on. If you read the RCW, it's for people that go out to the scene of of correction. People that are on correction or correctional probation or something like that, that become violent.
Well, that's a RCW, though, that's a state law, not me.
Well, I was referring, I don't I don't have that page open in front of me, but I was referring to that. That law that you that was referred to in that document for the mental health first responders. But by just saying mental health first responders, doesn't that mean that every mental health personnel occupation out there is a first responder in Clickedat County?
I I would have to say that since it was the state that made the rule, you'd have to ask the question of the state. I don't know what their mentality was.
So where's that rule located?
We will have to get back to you, so.
Okay, thank you.
Back and forth. Thank you, Tracy. Yes, Lee.
The resolution on the consent agenda actually is designating those crisis responders. It comes from comprehensive health. And those are their employees that they're designated. That's a state requirement. That way they respond to folks that are in mental health crisis. A lot of them are in our jail, yes.
But they can respond if the field officers request.
Hearing done, we are going to close public comment for the day and move into. Public hearings, public bid meetings. Now we're going to open the public. Additional six month extension to complete all conditions of approval. For short flat S L two thousand and eighteen dash twenty three. Kinsey's LLC.
Okay, so before you, today is a request for an additional six month extension to complete all conditions of approval. One two two oh eight two allows for one year. From preliminary approval to submit all conditions required and coming for final approval. An additional one year extension can be granted requested by the applicant. A provision for any extension beyond this is not included in the. The applicant requested and was granted a one year extension by the planning department on December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Extension. This extension moved the flat expiration date to February seventh, twenty seventy one, February seventh, twenty twenty two. The applicant has again asked for an additional extension due to unforeseen supply chain delays caused by the pandemic. And the inability to locate utilities to still covering the utility markets. If the board feels that an extension is warranted, the board will need to make a motion to grant it. Extension exceeding the current deadline to August seventh, twenty twenty two for short flat S L twenty nineteen dash twenty six.
Any questions to staff?
Just just one as far as what what do they have left? I mean, I noticed in their email chain. They were talking about the as built local. To me, sounds like they're as built, they're already built.
Yeah.
It was really, I mean, it's not like they're.
I think they're pretty close to being done, just final steps, but just trying to meet this February seventh deadline was possible. Because of the snow and so.
So the road, I I remember in there working on the road and it's it's all complete.
I. Couldn't tell you that for sure in sets of the road. I believe that we're looking at the final. Questions, usually the last details are the road improvements and signing off on the road, so whether they've been inspected and approved.
I would entertain a motion.
Oh, I I know there's plenty of supply chain. Some things for a year, other things for six months, so. With that, I would make a motion that we approve the additional six month inspector. Extension to complete all conditions of approval of the short flat S. L two zero one nine dash two three.
There is a motion and a second to extend the short flat deadline till August. All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we are now going to move to West District Court Judge Jeff Baker and Eastern District Court Judge Rick Hanson. For discussion concerning the changes within the adult probation. Come on forward. We can hear you, all right?
West District Chairman, it looks like Judge Baker is on.
Okay. Are you there, Judge Baker?
I I am on the phone with you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, hopefully Judge Hanson's there, might be more efficient to have him explain what we're needing to talk to you about. If he's not, I can certainly do that.
He's here.
Take it away, Judge Hanson.
Thank you, boy, that's words comes in loud and clear. I mean, I'm going to call in next time. Well, anyway, what we would like to propose at this point in time is that Courtney Cook be elevated to Mr. Barker's. Former position and then she take over that position on an interim basis. Of course, true for education, which would be, I think, July fourth. So that's what we're requesting today. Judge Baker, is anything to add to that?
I I don't, I think that's exactly what we're trying to do is. Get a at least those duties fulfilled and and have Courtney. Take that over and she's agreed to do that again on an interim basis till. We can hopefully open the chief probation officer position for hiring mid summer.
Seatmates, any questions?
I have a concern. Opening the chief probation officer mid summer, I don't believe we'll keep doing with your budget. But as far as the promotion, I have no problem. When we. I guess I would say come up to whatever this plan is for mid summer. You might want to clear it through HR and finance to make sure it stays under budget.
I think what the commissioners are being asked to approve is the stipend, the way they would pay for Courtney to be the interim is to apply this stipend. That was in the budget for Mr. Barker, thousand dollars a month. To Courtney to cover the cost of the interim. The impact of the budget. Be more of a discussion for Chen and Courtney and the judges, but. I think the judges have the ability to set an interim because they need a chief probationary. Chief probation officer by the court rules, but you'd have to prove the stipend.
So that's I said for this this part, yeah.
I'm crossing one bridge.
Well, it. I guess I would say we we are going to need to have a chief probation officer. We're going to be required to do that and we want to be able to give. Our. Well deserved employee an opportunity to apply for that. She would qualify to do that mid summer, that's the reason for bringing that up.
Oh, I see, got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Right, I guess we'll see back here in the summer. Thank you.
So let's hope to have it all worked out before.
Well.
Congratulations. I guess.
Yeah. Whatever what you wish for.
I look forward to work.
Good answer, yeah.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right.
Wasn't sure how long that discussion would take, so I tried to allow a sample.
Took longer than I got.
Issues as determined by the court. You guys have a court meeting today since we just opened up.
Actually, yeah. Clarification that I believe was. That we decided first. That we decided to not sue about Thursday workshops, but the not suing part. There was question on whether that was actually there, so to make it official. We have a conversation whether proceeding Thursdays workshops. My recommendation would be to not. But keep it open to the public for anybody that wants to show.
Yeah, I would concur as far as I look at, I mean, workshops are generally the board working with its staff. With no with no actions, those anytime the the quorum of the board meets, it's a public meeting, always has been a public. The public is welcome to come. Observe the discussions between the staff and the board. But I I. I agree, I mean, it's all, it's this new world that we. We want to have all this transparency. I don't believe it wasn't transparent before. I think it has. It's just more, it used to be workshops as well. We didn't actually have staff, we didn't have support staff. Clear the people here during those workshops. There was no, there was no support that needed because we were just having a meeting with staff. As far as to work through things, so that there is an added burden since we've done that. If it's, if there's no difference between a workshop and a business meeting. That's how we're basically treating them. They're not just. I don't see.
I'm going to help this. Free up stop. The public records, they might have more high. Either deal with that public. Or give some of their other million. It's still open to the public just like it was for a hundred years before.
Yes, sir.
We need a motion to that effect so that when we advertise on the agenda.
Would not be a bad idea to make a motion on the record.
Do either of you want to make a motion?
Oh, sure, hoping that shot at it. I would make a motion to again return to not live streaming our Thursday workshop sessions.
We're recording.
We're recording, bail, of course, will still be. In person.
There's a motion second to. Not record or zoom Thursday workshops. Further discussion. I'm really conflicted on this one personally because it takes me an hour and fifteen minutes to drive. To get to this building, the west side. And so it's a lot more difficult for people within district one to come up here for. Workshops if they do want to sit there through it. So and I understand the reasons and rationale. I also understand why people will be home. We are creating a huge amount of public records. We are creating a huge amount of data that we're having a hard time storing. And so I'm trying to weigh that personally.
I I would also add that. Popping onto the Thursday budget workshop, trying to get involved or understand. Orange thick budget binder via Zoom and they can only understand every third word. All they're doing is getting that information. They really care about a budget they need to sit here in the room. They did for two years. Have a budget pamphlets in front of them and they didn't actually understand. I would think it would be better for those that actually want the knowledge.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think it's unreasonable for the board and staff to use that. Soon capability as a tool of participation when it is necessary for one of the participants. Not to be able to physically be here. I mean, it's a tool for the county, for the board.
I mean, yeah, that's that's the other one that it's hard for me is we're all going different places and doing different things this year, going on vacations like everybody else. And if I'm in Florida, in Miami or something, and we have a Thursday workshop, I don't mind working during my vacation. In this one meeting last year because I want to stay up to date. I'd like to be able to be in those. So that's kind of I, I guess, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. All right, that's my. Thank you. I'm still new to the job, I you know, I still love it.
Did you change it? I saw it on there.
Okay, I just didn't know if I made it public to everybody or if I just made it public.
No, it's it's.
They can see it in June, but I'm.
We're actually going to take a poll on the.
Question.
I guess.
To die.
Okay, you have any further thinking issues, Mr. Christopher? Okay. Well, do you have anything, Mr. Sack? Okay, I have one thing that I'd like to discuss and that is. Since we have been in.
Come back.
I will come back. Since we've been up to the governor's emergency order that gave us a lot of latitude. And this was brought up a while ago about it's not very difficult to allow electronic signatures. We just have to write policy to do it, if I remember correctly according to the. And that is something that, you know, I hope, I hope that we will be out underneath the emergency proclamations very shortly. And we will go back to business as the new normal. But I would like to front run that by getting a new electronic. Signature policy in place and wanted to speak with you as well as ask the prosecuting attorney. If he's in favor of that and whether we want to move that direction.
I mean, yes. I'm no auditor would need to try to set policy, but.
And here I thought he was online, but he can't be a two.
Yeah. I've been wondering.
On for a lot of money. Do I, so if that's the case, I guess we can talk with the auditor and hopefully the prosecutor about the electronic signature policy. We can make some forward progress there. Okay, I'm coming back to you now.
I did get a, I got a heads up from Colin Spont. Just asking. About what Spontance is just asking for input. I forwarded, I just forwarded to be. So I just forwarded to you, but it is, uh, there is asking to, we wanted to weigh it. So there is a congressional letter, paste it below, going around to Secretary Earl. USDA regarding increased fees for emergency towers. So these would be on Forest Service lands has issued a proposed rule to significantly increase fees. Emergency towers and charge extensive rates. And they were just asking, would this, do we have any specific, you know, would this impact us? I don't believe we have any, I don't know the one that's on. Laptop, if that's on the Forest Service or if that is, I don't think so. I don't think it's on the Forest Service. That's why it said I would check in.
Well.
Me, the general rule, I'm, I would say I'm not in favor. Raising their rates as, you know, as, as public land as far as these were generally. No, I know that one's not because that's we pay, because that's pay a person a lot of money for that. They got us bought. So maybe I should forward, maybe, maybe Jeff would.
As I say, yeah, I. And you have that.
First, first, like, right, and they're to send it by February.
Your discretion.
So I think it's.
General, I. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm still, they, they are crazy. I don't know if they're trying to raise rates to be commensurate with. With what the privates are paying, but I mean, the Forest Service has its own. So I don't know. Is this, are they trying to do it legislatively or is Forest Service just doing it?
It's a, it's sort of doing the rules. Yep, myself.
I have nothing to say right now, but keep my. Uh, okay, do you have anything else?
No.
All right.
The picture. A quick question if I may, Commissioner. So on the electronic signature policy, we have looked into that, the finance committee actually with the. Presentation from the auditor's office, there is a, was an expense to doing that and it impacted IT. So are we. You wanting us to look into it if it's possible or you wanting to implement it? Everything comes with cost.
Everything comes.
And we didn't, we didn't mean with one of the major e-signature and looking at the space on the number of signatures, the number of documents. It was pretty complicated and it was.
Did we also look at Adobe Acrobat and everybody who has Adobe Acrobat Pro can do their own electronic signature.
Yeah, I mean, I can't recall the whole discussion about if that works on an enterprise basis, but I mean, it was more complicated than I think we thought initially. So. Obviously we'll look into it or do what you ask, but. Even Adobe Pro has a cost. It's fairly expensive software that we cannot give to every employee.
Right.
I guess I would say with that, whatever recommendations I'm reading. I would like to hear the presentation on costs and performance and all that kind of stuff. And I would pull whatever light gave for myself.
So my Adobe Pro, I can just do that. Think I could do it a thousand times. It doesn't cost me.
How many Adobe Pros we have out there? What's the cost of?
Well, and, and I know if it needs to be for everybody, everybody.
Well, that's part of the discussion we were having is, you know, is it, is it paying bills for time cards? Who's it for? When to use? What's the application? So.
Time card and all that, you know, I think financial software should be part of. Probably that. Yes, I think, I guess we'll send it back to the financial committee to have more discussions and for IT and so on.
And I know you want to get the PA's opinion on it, but yeah, we can maybe get that information back together and. Remind ourselves the outcome, but I do think it was initially looking at time cards, which is much more expansive and much more expensive.
Right.
Software. Exactly. Okay.
This is just an. And I think you, you know. I mean, if it's policy, we should allow electronic signatures as a policy and how we do that, whether it's Adobe Pro or something else, we just need the policy authorized.
That's what I'm saying. I'm fine with the policy.
Right.
I haven't proved the funding. For anything yet, but I am proving the policy accepted.
Okay, so let's get with prosecuting attorney's office as well and maybe, I mean, finance committee might, we might have all the thoughts in the world, but I would like to send it. Through these guys.
Is that policy initiated? Mission standard, what, who's going to initiate that policy? Is that the auditor's office? I mean, is there even a legal?
Gentlemen. This is Heather Joby.
Hi, Heather.
Hi. So I drafted that initial emergency policy and was, uh, we had discussed making a permanent policy. But like Rob was saying, we ran into snags with what the scope of the policy needs to be. Most of those policies are very specific about programs that are used. The purpose, the extent, and we couldn't ever really come to any kind of resolution as to what it was we wanted to use it for and what. Path we were going to go down because it changes programs. There are nuances that have to be worked out. You can't just have a policy that says, oh, we're going to accept electronic signatures.
So we can revisit it if that's what you want us to do.
Okay. I'm signing up for all the additional work, so. And you are too.
Absolutely. You've been very good about, you know. Off to the finance committee.
Okay.
Guys, yours.
Afternoon. Um, yes, there was a lengthy conversation with that in the finance committee, so we will let's. Um, in our last discussion last week, we, um. Talked about surplus property, um, kind of went through that, um, just kind of how it would work and just a reminder that if we were going to. Surplus something we would need, we can't really, we need to keep it transparent and surplus property to, you know, run it through the processes. Kind of specifically talking a little bit about MX one that, you know, we need to make sure that we're, if that's something we want to do. That we, you know, we can't go look for people to buy it and then come up with the process. So we, there is a process. Um, during the discussion we had, uh, and so much has changed in just three days because I've talked to Gordy and one of the things that I walked away with was to get with Gordy and talk about some ways to do it through a surplus sale. Um, with some reserve bids and then Gordy and I had some discussion. So we're going to need some more time to do something with that. So he and I will get together. Because we came up with some other ideas as well, but, um, as far as starting X one, uh, it was discussed, you know, of maybe doing a surplus in the property, putting it out there and putting a reserve bid of. Two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And if we didn't get there, then nobody was interested. It's a kind of, as we've kind of, if on Friday, it seemed like a good idea, the more you kind of think about some of that stuff, you think, wow. The way the surplus property stuff works and the way we've been doing it, you know, it's kind of like people have to have the cash, like for bid for assets when you do the foreclosure. So if there was some kind of funding or something that went along with it, which it could need something like that, maybe a request for proposal might be a better kind of some way to do it. So I, I mean, we're not, so we, we just need more time to look at different options and talk. And one thing we did agree with that we would not want it to go into a, we would want it to be its own auction or. Forum by itself as well. So, um, we did do some, Gordy and I kind of talked about some things and we didn't really get anywhere to present anything today to have because there's just not enough. Too many, too many pieces with that. So we're going to continue to talk about it. We've been going through some of the other buildings and different things recently. So we've been spending some time together and so we're going to noodle it over, but. But we did go through that. We had a discussion at the, um, at the finance committee regarding just surplus in general, that if it's real estate, you know, we need to go through and surplus it and put it out there or something like that. We can't. Try to find a buyer and then go, we need to really follow the process and that was where we had the discussion. Um, let's see, uh. We talked about the resolution for the white salmon property will be on next week's consent agenda. So, uh, we have that all set, ready to go. Uh, and so that's, that's ready. So we'll be able to finish that. That was a tax title property that the board agreed. And so there's a resolution finalizing it. I've talked with, uh, several. For the city, for the stairs, the dock grade piece that we've had. And we agree, you just, in, as the year has progressed, it just was one of those things. So we're getting that, um, checked off. I have three property things. That's one of them. Um, during that discussion, which was the end item, we didn't brow, uh, we didn't kind of rabbit trail over into the mill property. We talked about that a little bit. Um, but my office has been doing some work into that, trying to figure out that is another piece of tax title property. Um, and we are close. We are waiting on a little bit more. We think that we, I think I said March fifteenth in the meeting that we were going to try to have something to the board so that we could do that or. Next meeting, I can't remember, but we, we're going to, we're close on that. Um, and we are, we've kind of done some research. Uh, we have seen where the, some of the payments for the buyer districts or the school districts have gone. So, um, I think we're, that one will be another one that we'll be able to, to check off the list. Um, we did talk about the renewable fund six twenty-six. Um, I know there's been questions about the balance on that fund. We did, um, we didn't go into great detail about it in the meeting, but we did talk about that's the dollars that are set aside as sales tax. Um, the fund. It balance, the cash balance at the twelve thirty-one is one point three million. Um, and the fund started at four hundred and eight thousand in January of that year. So it grew about nine hundred and fourteen five. Over, um, twenty twenty-one, um, from sales tax receipts that were designated to there. Um, again, these are receipts for projects that we don't know where the refunds are going to come or whether they're going to be at fifty, seventy-five or a hundred percent of the. Sales tax pieces. So that's our part. Uh, I know that we'll continue to have more discussion around this, but that was, that was the question.
So I've been reading on their. The legislation that's passed. And it looked like it exempted solar projects from section three. For that, the hundred percent. So it seemed like it might top out as seventy-five percent. Um, because I was, I was looking, you know, at that legislation versus the legislation they're currently looking at with regards to. Data centers and all the equipment of the data centers. And the data center has different language that only applies to the state portion of sales.
Good.
Which would leave our portion for us. Huge.
Yeah, I, I believe that the DOR's current website and rulings and form says that solar is included. So would this be a change to that?
No, it's just the RCW that I was looking.
Okay.
And so we need to look at that a little closer.
Okay. Because I've been going from on the DOR site. So I'll, I'll, we'll maybe kind of match those two up and see what they say is where they're at.
Like, you know, because we're, we're holding seventy-five percent right now.
Right.
We know we'll be good if it's seventy-five, but if it's a hundred.
Right.
Suckers dry real quick.
Right. If everything gets put in and then. Yeah, yes, I would agree with you.
Yeah, but a lot of that has.
No, but I will think, I think I said that for the reason of the set at seventy-five percent. That when that was fund was originally set up, that was the maximum. And so we were like to be extra careful, like set it at the, that way at the end. It's, it's, you know, when they don't, because we had at the point when seventy-five percent was the maximum. The projects that came in that, that they're not, not every one of them got seventy-five percent. And so there is, there was some balance built in. But that is the concern. So it would be nice to know because if now a hundred is the potential. Are we comfortable with just keeping it at seventy-five and kind of putting in the. The odds because it won't ever be a hundred percent of a hundred percent. And remember, we didn't have money set aside for the, we didn't do any reservation of the P U V, Lango gas. Um, transition.
Some of that stuff.
We didn't. So, so. Right. So we were not, we did not have to tap in and reduce sales tax when that happened because we did have a reserve. So. We set the balance all that up. Um. And. The auditor, uh. Said that she was going to circle back with, uh, Public Works on the, uh, state audit piece. We had a discussion about that. So she's going to work back with. Gordy and I think she said she was going to work with Nick at the SAO and they were going to try to get the meeting together or something, but Brenda was going to, she brought up that she was going to. Work on that. So that is something that she's going to coordinate with SAO and with Gordy so that they can get some discussion and kind of figure out that part. I know there was some discussion around that. Uh, piece of the E R R audit. Um. I brought up, um, these reports, uh, and had said, you know, is it good for treasure to come over and, and report or, you know, did the board want to do that? Uh, or have the board chair report back to the, to the group? Um, we had such short discussion, but we decided we would continue doing it this way that, you know, we thought it was good, open discussion and everything like that. And Jake thought this was a good format. So we, we're going to continue doing it the way we've been doing it. So we didn't have a brief discussion about that. Um, and then I did, um, let the group know that in my office I have, uh. Two ladies that are going to be on maternity leave starting. April first, um, and then one in May. Um, so we're probably going to be a person down. Pretty much for about six months. Um, I have kind of started, I, I mostly wanted to just let you guys know that that's a challenge that we're going to face over there. And we're going to look at different options. Um, and so one of the options that we're going to look at is trying to maybe get a. A, a, like a six month temp type person to where we can have a body through both situations. Because in our office, when we go down to. Um, if we were to be at five or four people, that really kind of puts us in a, you know, buying for, uh, providing our service, you know, with doing reads and. Staying open all day and so on and so forth. And then especially if we have a sixth, somebody calls in sixth and you're down to a couple. So. I will be putting some numbers together, but I brought that up to the group just to let everybody know that we will be, you know, we do work with the auditor's office. So I wanted to let them know, you know, kind of that, what, what we have coming up. So. We're going to try to, it seemed like a long time ago when they told me in December, but it's coming. Quickly, I guess, before December, but, but when they brought it up, I'm like, okay, great. Now it's just right around the corner. So yes, we do have that coming up. Um, and that's. About it for. Finance. The next meeting will be the eleventh. I will obviously add electronic signature law for our discussion if there's not further discussion of it before. Uh, any additions or things that I might have missed?
I'm a pre-high school student for two hours today.
Yeah, I didn't tell you about that part. That's Rob's part.
We can farm it out. See you coming home.
Yeah. Exactly. Um, the problem is, I think on that one, it's going to be in a weird, I, 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 I'm hoping that maybe we'll find some, because it is kind of over the summer. That's another thing. So. Um, we have to do that. So, but I will put together some numbers and bring those up and, um. And present those when I have a little bit more, uh, pieces. Because I've been working on taxes, so I'm hoping that the taxes will be assessed, uh, and you'll be able to start paying your taxes after February seventh. Um, we're pretty close to getting everything dialed in. We're just going through some final revisions. Again, we won't mail the tax statements out until the end of February, the first week of March. And we usually mail them out after the big rush, all the big counties use the printer for the middle of February. So we kind of go in that next wave. Um, so that's exciting. I know people aren't overly excited about that, but it's. Oh, yeah, because short plats, um, all of that kind of stuff that goes on. It is, yeah, yeah. So we actually do get a lot of folks that do have, for some reason or another, um. So we actually do get a lot of folks that do, for some reason or another, um, yeah, I mean, there are, there are, there are folks that are ready to do, for some reason, or, um, real estate transactions. Maybe they're getting ready to go where they may, where they'd be paying the first half, so then they want to get those taxes taken care of.
It might not be.
It just makes me feel better once they're assessed and we can start to.
I know, we can wait for my.
Um, so, uh, the other thing, we are, we still have our foreclosure, uh, we should have ads on the radio that have been going on. And we have the bid for assets link on our webpage, um, and we have the five, there are five parcels on there. So, uh, that is going to be again, starts on February fourteenth and ends on February fifteenth. Uh, we finalized the modular building, uh, annex. Five, um, and I believe it's cleaned out and the keys are, the locks are changed, so we'll be working with the person that purchased that in our agreement was one thirty-one. Um, so we'll be getting them ready, so hopefully that will be working on finding itself at the home.
So are they, have the power bill for it now?
I doubt it, I don't know, that wasn't in the agreement, we didn't, that wasn't part of the thing, there shouldn't be much of a power bill, I don't know that. Yeah, but I'm just saying, I mean, there's not, there shouldn't be any lights or. Okay, well, we should turn those off. They did, yeah, they did, they did take the lights out of, of another area, you're like, oh, it's dark. Um. So yeah, so that's working along, um, we have been, uh, working with Gordy on surplusing items. So, uh. Kind of going through their, brought it to our attention from the treasurer's office and we've reached out with Gordy and Lee, that there's really a lot of stuff that's left around. The, the annex one is, is full, uh, annex four, um, is got a lot of stuff in it. And so we think the best thing, and again, I see these guys moving desks and I hate seeing them move it from here to here and then move it again over to here and do this kind of thing. So we've really worked in the last probably fifteen days, trying to figure out what the fastest is that we could do a surplus sale. We think that the fastest we can do it is to have a surplus sale on March twenty-fourth and thirty through thirtieth, it will be online. Um, we will take pictures, we will probably not have a viewing of everything, we will probably, we're taking pictures of everything put together because the desks aren't going to. The thing with not having a viewing is desks aren't going to be together because they're having to be taken apart, to be taken out, so they're really on a pallet. So we're taking pictures of everything. Joe, oh, okay, um, we're taking pictures of everything and trying to get an inventory of everything, we're going to get that to Lee. Where our goal is to get it by Wednesday night or first thing Thursday morning of what all is out there to be surplus. Um, so that, um, next week she can set a hearing to have a surplus on the, for the twenty-fourth of March. Um, and, or no, a public hearing on March eighth, excuse me, um, and so that we can get some of this stuff gone. Gordy has gone through with his crew and identified the trash, things that just are broken, that really are, are not surplusable. Uh, but there is a lot of desks and a lot of filing cabinets, we have tons of filing cabinets. So, um, and, you know, we're, but we're not sending an email out to everybody trying to get all the pieces and bring everything in. We're just really trying to clean up these two buildings so that we can get stuff gone, so that he's got less stuff to have to work around and our people are moving it. Because in the beginning, we were really thinking, oh, we could stage it at the fairground, but all we're doing is a lot more work trying to, and. I agree with you, and so. Right, so. Right, so this stuff, we're just trying to put it into annex one, um, and annex four, so that we would be able to, one of the things that we learned on doing the public. Um. It, there was a lot piled in there, we, we've taken some of that out, yes, we, we did leave some shelving and things in there. But, um, so we are really, I think it's going to help Gordy's guys out and not having to move stuff around and try to get rid of some things. I don't think we're going to get rich doing this, but we're going to at least get rid of some stuff that actually does have some usable life left in it. And, you know, we're going to put it out there and we'll see, and, and I, I'm not saying we're going to make thirty dollars or whatever on a chair or whatever, but we'll also get it hauled off. And if somebody has a need for it, then great, it could go be used in its second life and it will hopefully be a good one. So, um, so that is one of the things that we're really working on because we think that that's something that we got to do to help Gordy out and everything. Because I, I just think we're just moving stuff in a circle and it's like. And, and, and get, yeah, and just kind of get it moved out and everything. So, so we're not going to do a, um, dealing, um, you know, because we'd have to then manage it, have people, and it's just, it would be really too difficult. But we're really trying to take a lot of pictures, take some measurements and, and do that kind of thing. And I don't think people are going to be spending so much that they're going to be out a bunch of money if it's not a hundred percent exactly what they're wanting. But, but we'll do our best to do that, but we think that's in the greater good. So we've been working with Lee and thanks for, for leasing, we really ratcheted this down and I think this is about as fast as we can do it. Checking all the boxes to advertise the public hearing and get all the pieces, that's really a large portion of what's so difficult is trying to get the public hearings and the advertisements to be able to get out there and get it advertised to the public. So you actually have somebody who's going to go bid on it, so. Anyway, that is one of the things that's new and exciting. Um, and actually that's it, I got the taxes, um, the surplus sale. And the foreclosure, so those are the other items that we have from the treasurer's office. Any questions?
Questions here?
Well, thank you gentlemen.
Moving on. Are we going to have executive session? Bills really fast, why are you sitting down? I'll second it. Second, you're ruling consent agenda with seven items, all those in favor, second.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was. Uh, approved accounts payable once in Nevada, a hundred eighty thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, page six says payable benefit of forty, zero dollars to the date, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion. There's a motion in a second to pay the bills, all those in favor, second, whoever's saying hi. Hi, motion carries, okay, now, yeah, the public side.
That's part of executive session, discuss pending litigation, pending and front litigation.
Do we have anything for public discussion?
Maybe a public discussion. Or something, if you could be in on the. The why, is there the rationale of the whole view of loss that the county was about a part of? There's that pending history that they should be asked to. Just want to show up, all this stuff, and I know we didn't do it, and you're curious as to why.
You would need to ask the prior board members.
Okay, um, is there anything else for vote attention? Anybody?
Okay.
We will be entering into executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two dot three zero, one one zero, or session one. I, for issues of a general nature that will be discussed in open session, so we are going into executive session. Things call, uh, we will be making no decisions after we come out of executive session. So for those online, thank you for another fun day with Sootgat County, Porta County Commissioners.